We're going to call ourselves to order. The first quarter of business will be the prayer and then we'll have the pledge of allegiance this time. He'll lead us into the prayer.
Lord, we thank you one more time that you leave us all here for here tonight. We ask that you take the business, be with those that conduct the business, that everything will be done in decent and order. Forgive us for our many very special errors that we make every day. All these failures we ask and I'm thankful for.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cancel one senator?
Here.
Cancel one of the legislature?
Here.
Cancel one of the bickers?
Here.
Cancel one of the lassers?
Here.
Mayor Fletcher?
Here.
Quarter of silence and okay. Ray open.
Yeah, he should want to show up.
We do have a court. Alrighty. Next thing is the approval of the minutes from May sixteenth. If you've got those in your packets, take a few minutes here. See if you want to ask anything at all.
I just had a couple things.
Oh, yeah?
Page one town pair update. I ran the phones and five collected, should be in prizes collected. The other thing I wasn't sure about that next line, be sold for fifteen dollar prices.
Fifteen dollars shirts.
Fifteen dollars, t-shirts would be sold for fifteen dollars.
Dollars shirts.
I thought dollars sounded better, but I wasn't sure.
Fifteen dollars, big prices down.
Yeah. And then the last, second page, approval for visitors. Mayor Fletcher was speaking of the old town lights?
Yeah, correct.
Is that old or is it?
Uh, I believe it is. It's like an old.
That, was that correct? I'm sure it is.
Anybody else see anything? If not, we'll entertain a motion that the minutes be approved with the couple correction.
So moved.
So moved by Jacob. Do we have a second?
I'll read it.
Second by Melanie. All those in favor, say five, say nine. Any opposed, like sign, so ordered. Alrighty. Next quarter of business is the May twenty-third financial statements. You've got those in your packet.
Um, if you take a look at the income for the month of May, it was sixty-three thousand nine nineteen oh five. Expenses for the month was sixty-two thousand nine ninety-four twenty-three for surplus for the month of nine twenty-four eighty-two. Pretty straight across the board, there's nothing as far as expenses or even incomes that really stands out. It's pretty much routine this month. Um, we will talk about here in a few minutes, uh, the delinquencies and other things. But, um, really there's nothing on the expenses. I gave you the list of the proceeds route and income and everything. There's not one single thing quite up. Now that does leave us for surplus for the year two-ten, two ninety-six eighty-seven. Have you had any questions?
Any questions from anyone? Alrighty, if not, we'll entertain a motion to accept the financial statements as presented.
I'll make motion.
First by Melanie, second by Kay. All those in favor, say five, say nine. Any opposed, like sign, so ordered. Alrighty. Next thing we have then is the summer street charter under old business.
Yeah, we've been, we've been having a lot of people contact us and just want to know if we're going to have it. And we really, I don't think there was really ever a definite. I know we went around that one evening and talked about it, but, and Elaine said she only had like a couple of kids or something there at the end. Have you decided on that or just so we can let people know?
I think that's really up to you and whether or not you've got somebody to run it, alright? You and Nicole.
That's what I mean. What, when is that actually?
We were actually doing one that week, you know.
I think she was doing it on Thursday, Wednesday or Wednesday.
I think we've done a Monday, I think we've done a Thursday, so. Yeah. I mean, the only thing we can do is do it until we're stopped or whatever with the water company or.
We could, we would see if any kids show up, but when I talked to Elaine, she was kind of like, she didn't want to spend an hour down there or a half hour down there and nobody showed up.
Yeah.
I think, I think they show up at the beginning.
Yeah.
And it kind of dwindles down as there's a lot.
Okay. Okay, Nicole and I'll see.
I definitely do it. Just with work, it's going to be hard for me to pick a date because I work every other Monday and every Thursday.
It might not be like the same, you know, may not be the same day of the week, but we can let them know, I mean.
Yeah, once you all just pick a date and go with it, whatever.
We could pick like one day a week and go with it.
Yeah. Yeah, we just need, I mean, what we were doing before was like six, six-thirty or something, right? And, uh, we'll just, uh, just let us know.
Now, are they still having the guys to turn the water on or did she turn it on?
They, she'd actually been turning it on.
Who's got the tool?
Uh, I haven't, I haven't, yeah. And, uh, the, the sprayer's still down by salt beans, hadn't even been moved up there, so.
Okay.
I need them to do all that.
Do you want to get them to do that? What, Monday of next week? And then we'll put it out, will they? You know, they can have it in front of Monday of next week and we'll.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Is the pot still full?
Uh?
I know I'm on the pot, but it's still full.
Uh, yeah. Yeah, until we get the property from auctioned down. So Monday next week, we'll start.
Okay.
Six to six-thirty?
Six, can you be there six, six-thirty?
Six, oh, six-thirty.
Uh-huh.
Just coming Monday next month, yeah.
Okay.
Monday is. That'll be the twenty-sixth. Just coming Monday.
Okay. Next thing's the town festival wrap-up, just with financials and something I put on the agenda. John has prettyed up a form for you.
Um, if you take a look at the, uh, the income, on the left, we, um, received money from Triad Energy, Oil Company, Wholesale Transmission, Wiseville State Bank, Bell Chemical Company, Canal County Commission. I put West Virginia Culture, or it's actually Cultural Museum.
Culture and history.
Cultural and history. Um, just from general income from the festival and then from booth rentals. Um, the income was twelve thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. If you take a look at the expenses with all the singers, so we're looking at the Squires, Brett Crum, who was the Elvis impersonator, Hard Rain, Mountain Gold, Exile, the sound system with William Reynolds, stage lights with Preston Hall, uh, the stage cost from Canal County Parks and Recreation, Crozier's, which is the, um, porta potties. Um, Adam actually, um, had to buy the trashcans. Uh, Quan with the inflatables, Dynamic Graphics for the T-shirts, crowd boards for the car trophies. Um, Tractor Supply, which was actually paint and some other things for the booths. Uh, those, which was actually replacing some of the receptacles. And then Fast Science for some of the signs out there, we're looking at twelve forty-four, twelve four forty-four seventy-six for a, um, a negative two fifty-six seventy-six, which is really good considering we didn't get to have the car show, uh, which would have done a lot more income from the car entries and so on, so. Um, the good thing is, we're going to have the car show in September. Um, the trophies are already paid for and everybody gets spent out, so, uh, they'll kind of do away with, uh, that. Uh, so is it the DJ? I didn't put the DJ in there.
The DJ, we, we voided that check.
Oh, did, was that voided? Okay, so that, that'll still come out in September, so.
It was on Monday.
Any questions?
I think we had a pretty good, uh, festival for just spending basically two hundred fifty-six, six, seventy-six on it.
Indulgent rain, rain, rain.
I think we'd have done a lot better, um, didn't hear any complaints from the vendors except for Linda. No, we didn't hear any negative stuff from the vendors. Um, really glad that the archery team showed up from Dupont Middle. Um, a lot of kids and everybody seemed to enjoy that and a lot of us didn't even know they had it, so it was, you know.
Yeah, I did. I mean, Bruce, I did, I did.
This is the first year.
Yeah.
Yeah, alrighty. Uh, next thing then is the mini grant application, ideas from council, anybody have anything at all? On that mini grant application that I mentioned last month?
I know we've talked about it before, but doing LED lights, um, for the, uh, streetlights. Would that be considered or like a beautification? I know the grant said it had to be, or one of the requirements was a beautification type of.
It, it, uh, could be if they don't charge us. I have not ever found out, I sent that to D, or to AEP. AEP has not gotten back to me yet about what they're going to do or what the charge would be, if any, or whatever.
Alright.
So I'm still waiting on AEP to get back, so I don't know if they're trying to do some kind of a survey of everything or what they're doing, but, I'd sent them an email and, and heard back that they got the email and everything, that's, that's the extent of where I'm at. So I definitely, you know, trying to, was trying to get that going, so. Uh, but, you know, that and then anything else, and you know, the, the lights, the old lights and things like that, would be probably in that grant with Greater Canal Valley Foundation and, uh, through the Rick Board and, uh, to get that done, so. Uh, they still have a couple more sidewalks to look at through town and, uh, then they'll put all that together and bundle all that together and get back to us.
Okay, cool.
Would, would that also, uh, take in, I was thinking, Nicole and I were looking at the brackets and everything, that they put up on the light poles for the little banner things?
Uh-huh.
Is there a possibility that, it looks like Adam and they might be able to make those for us? Maybe that would be.
I mean, we could actually purchase them, uh, can you grab some of them books?
I did.
Can you see how much they are?
Yeah, that's why I asked if we could, I mean, they, they charge you for each piece.
Yeah.
So.
But how much they are per piece?
It's like five hundred some dollars for one. Yeah.
Yeah.
But what I was thinking is if they could come up with something simple, then, you know, we may be able to have people sponsor the flags. Like if we did the military one time, people that have military people, you know, they could sponsor their own family, you know, to put them up. And then like some of these other flags, we possibly could get some, you know, um.
Well, I just need to know something like right now. I mean, cause this, this has to be in next week.
Well, like the singles on the flags, they're like one twenty-five.
I'm talking about the brackets or whatever. I mean, something I need to put together like right now. That's why I brought it up last month.
Okay.
And.
You said they were like five hundred dollars a piece though, right?
Yeah. The brackets are with all the pieces, well, they're all different sizes, but depends on, we can let you know something more. Is that quick enough? Okay. Yeah, because we can, we can let the pieces in more. And they're different ones, but there's different brackets for each one.
I mean, we're just, we're kind of in a hurry to get this done.
The other thing I love is what about the mural we were going to paint there, you know, the old mural there? Is that something that they could cover?
We, we'd probably be able to do that, but now since schools, I haven't heard anything back from Carter.
Yeah.
And, you know, probably won't until they come back, so.
Could we at least get the paint though? And kind of store the paint till August or something?
Might as well just wait, we're getting ready to end up at the end of the year.
That's right.
And we'll start into a new budget July first, so we're going to go to a new budget. Uh, actually Bell Chemical still says that they are going to paint the underpass, uh, so that is still in the works and they're going to pay for all that. So that'll be good. So I think we're, we're moving forward with that one, but I just need to know if any of you have anything at all. You know, I just need something that we can spend the seven thousand bucks. And, and, you know, there's a possibility that we might get a little more than seven thousand bucks. And I know we're, I'm, or they're obligated to us right now over seven, so.
Okay.
We'll see what happens. We had several towns being chosen last year, so.
Really? That's okay, we, uh.
Yeah. So there's a chance we could grab some of that if they're going to use it, so. Alrighty. Okay, let's take the, uh, maybe municipal service fees, home liens and ownership correction. John?
So, we have placed our first nine liens, I think it is, against properties. Leans total forty-seven thousand five hundred seventy-one dollars and twenty-nine cents. That's step one. Um, I will tell you, there are some properties we're going to have to look at writing off. Um, people don't live there anymore, it was sold, um, companies took it over, so on and so on, so we, we are going to have to look at some of that. Um, there's one, for example, ten thousand eight hundred forty-four dollars. Um, it's now owned by Mado, which is a company that's owned by two other companies, but anyway. Um, so we're going to have to look at writing some of these off. But, um, first seven liens are down, second lien's getting ready to come, come out this next week. Um, uh, we're looking at, I think it was like a total of a hundred and twen- hundred and twenty-eight thousand, maybe, um, that I was looking at putting liens on, so. It, it's ridiculous, that twenty dollar a month service fee is now equivalent to forty-seven thousand dollars by the amount of pieces of property.
What about all these people that are, that rent these properties out? I mean, there's, there's one of them here that's got like three pieces of property and they're behind.
Who is that?
Uh, Robin Chestnut.
Uh, we'll add those together and put a lien on the property.
So keep, yeah, the word states that if the, um, owner of the property leased or rented that property out the owner and the renter is not paying it, the owner's still responsible, so.
That is the owner.
Well, well, I'm just saying if they're renting it out.
Right.
Um, when I am sending out the notices, according to the ordinance, the notice is going to the renter and it's also going to the owner. I'm backtracking that through the Canal County Sheriff's Tax Department and through the West Virginia Flood Map, which is pulling up, um, the owner of the property as well.
These people know they owe that.
Sure do. Uh, they've received more notices than you would if you owed money to a mortgage company because they're getting notices every single month, uh, sometimes two or three times a month because they're delinquent. So, we have crossed every T and O and every I when it comes down to making sure that they are aware. We are also sending out two, um, um, certified mail documents that liens are getting ready to go, are being put on and then they are up to a, um, um, an appeal process, so they can appeal that as well, so. I have two that are appealing to me. One has nothing to lean on other than she can't afford it, um, and then, um, well, both of them have pretty much nothing to lean on, I can just put that on the slide. My whole thing is, uh, I, I pay money every month.
I do too, but I retired.
Most people I know pay theirs every month. Twenty dollars a month is not going to make or break you. Um, when I see some of these people who are walking every day at Hallmark, uh, to buy cigarettes, pop, whatever they're buying, they're spending more than twenty dollars, then they could actually pay the bill, so. Any questions on that?
No, thank you.
No, good job.
There was, uh, and I don't know who the lady was, because I don't know a lot of people by name, but my face, I do. And she said, well, mine goes into my rent every month. So I think some of our renters, our, our people that are renting property out, are charging, they're just not paying us.
Well, that's okay, because the person who's going to service out the renter is going to be the landowner, so. I have one gentleman who owns a, a lot on the river, who rents that lot to a person who has a, a, a mobile on that lot on the river. And they're on the list, now it's only like two hundred and fifty bucks. And he said, well, who are you going to put the lien on? The renters. No, you're the landowner, it's going to be on, on your land. So, he's putting pressure on her to, to make the payment, but, um, you know, I am talking to these people, trying to get these resolved. Even if it's not above the thousand dollar reign, um, I'm still trying to get the hundred sixty, uh, five hundred, whatever it is.
And he won't budge?
No, he is, but it's, you know who it is. I'm sorry, yeah?
Has, would you do the certified idols? Has been any of them that has refused to sign off on it?
There has.
So they know what, what they're refusing?
Uh, they know they're refusing a letter from the town.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
I figure they know what it is. I mean, people that owe us know they owe.
I, I can tell you, most of those people that are refusing, they're not refusing the bill they're getting every month and that bill has what they have as well, so.
Is this not being returned?
Correct.
From that side.
And it's not being returned, so.
Alrighty, we'll move on then to the update on West Reynolds Avenue, continuing saga. And, uh, uh, we actually, we have now the storm drain work, the sewer work's all finished. West Virginia Water Company actually finished, uh, yesterday and today. Uh, they've actually turned water onto the street. And Mount Air Gas finally got back and said they're going to start on that street on Monday. Uh, so they are going to, uh, as with the work that you've seen at Thirteenth Street, the work down here by the Family Dollar building, the work down at, uh, by Stub Drive, the Stone House, uh, that work that's been done in there, that, that station right there is going to be revamped and some work done in there. Uh, but they'll eliminate that high-pressure line that goes down Stub Drive out to, uh, where the sanitation plan is and turns left and goes up West Reynolds Avenue. That line will be vacated very soon, as soon as they finish this project on Sixth Street by the alley there. And, uh, but that will be done and then Mount Air Gas is going to come in, replace that line, the low-pressure line and actually possibly some, some of the lines go into some of the homes, depending on what those lines look like. So I did talk to, uh, Joe Wiseman with Wiseman Excavating. He is holding off on getting it paved and, uh, possibly another month to get them through this. And then, uh, in that way, when we do pave that street, hopefully nobody digs that street up for anything. And that's what we're trying to get, get to the point to be able to do that, so. So I want to just let everybody know, let the Santrin one know today, so everything's good on that end. Next thing going into new business, donation request from Dupont Middle School Archery Team, you got a letter in your packet. Yes, John, they didn't ask for any certain amount, I guess they're just asking that we provide them with some financial assistance.
And being a first-year program.
Yeah. Dupont Middle School, attention to archery area, archery, uh, department.
Yeah, they're the ones, they're the ones that had the archery here to vessel.
Yeah, so they were here to have the festival. What's the pleasure, what do you want to offer them, donation?
What we can, what we have to, that we can.
Uh, we still got, I mean, we still have a very good bid, we're almost the end of the year, so, I mean, you know.
I'd say five hundred dollars.
Okay, you want to put that in form of a motion?
That's a motion.
Melanie, put it in form of a motion to donate five hundred dollars to Dupont Middle School Archery. Anybody want to second that?
I'll second it.
Second by Nicole. All those in favor, say five, say nine. Any opposed, like sign, so ordered. Alright, next thing again is the Town Bell Car Show. Uh, Tim had actually called, oh, that's been a while. Tim called me this past week, we were thinking that, uh, might want to change it and then made a decision to not to change it. Uh, September fifteenth and sixteenth, fifteenth being a cruise in that night, Friday evening. Uh, we would close the street down from Dupont Avenue down from Seventh Street to Thirteenth Street, like we did for the festival. Uh, and then have the cruise in that night, have a band here playing that evening. And then, uh, go out the next day, we'll have, uh, DL here with us for the day and, uh, he'll do some DJing and everything and then we'll, uh, have another band or two, maybe in the afternoon, late afternoon, early evening. And, uh, um, we've got a band here in West Virginia that, uh, plays in Nashville, Tennessee, called the Davidson Brothers Band. I do have a field out to them to see whether or not we can get them in bail on Saturday night. Uh, they are according to the schedule, they're available, so. Uh, then I just need to find some money, uh, to, in order to make that happen, so.
Uh, but, uh. We couldn't use that grant, could we?
Uh, no, it would be nice, but. But, uh, uh, with that being said, Tim, go ahead.
Marty said, or not Marty, Joe Green.
Uh-huh.
Said once we got a date set for me to contact him, I mean, if you'll allow me to do that. And he's going to, he knows all the coal companies?
Yeah.
He thinks that he can get us some sponsorship.
Yeah, he told me the same thing, I'll reach out. Yeah, I'll reach out with the dates and get that and see what we can get, but we need to give him, uh, some numbers first.
Yeah.
And, uh, what we're going to need. We know we've already bought the trophies, we, you know, got that.
I've got a lot of, I've got a lot of stuff to give away, which I went to some other people, said, hey, it's, uh, September, we might be able to give you some more.
Yeah. So, uh, I'll reach out to him and give him that, but I'm, I need to find some numbers first.
One thing I'd like to change, so.
What's that?
We're going to have, cruise in will be free. That'll be free. We'll try to pass out a few gifts that night, you know, I'll get them to call. But instead of the registration being ten dollars, I think we ought to make it fifteen. Because there's nothing, all these shows, it sleeps fifteen to twenty-five, most of them is twenty. So fifteen dollars would help us out a little bit on expenses. You don't think that would defer anybody from coming? I mean, it's five dollars, I wouldn't. They're paying fifteen bucks. Okay.
Now, are you guys planning on having any paid vendors or anything by the way?
We're, we're, we're thinking that we would probably invite maybe a couple. And, so, you know, just a, just a couple, but, because this way we can leave it mainly for the cars.
I was going to say, because, uh, the board, you guys said you might be interested depending on when.
Yeah, I talked about this up there in the evening the other day. I go up there at least once a week.
They had one at the, at the show in Summerfield, week before last, there was a hundred cars there, they had one vendor.
Yeah.
They could have probably used another one.
Yeah.
They just had one.
I mean, if there's a variety.
Yeah.
Yeah, they just had one.
I think a couple we could.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll get, we'll find a couple of those that we had and hit them back in here. But, uh, with that being said, uh, we'll need a motion second, uh, to offer this on September fifteenth. But with that being said, we'll need a motion second to offer this on September fifteenth and sixteenth. Do the cruise in on Friday night. Need to pick up a, find a band or so to play that night. And then come back on the sixteenth, possibly have a couple bands on the sixteenth, late afternoon or the evening. And we're thinking about maybe shutting down about nine?
I'd say on Friday evening, we'll put it from like four to nine.
Well, four, four to nine, but that way I know when the music and.
Yeah, yeah.
Nine.
Yeah.
Okay, on Friday, Saturday, quit, wait, nine?
Well, it wouldn't be any later than that.
Okay. I didn't know if you'd want to even go earlier, but.
Whatever you want to do.
What time is the, you know, what time you'd only cut the car show down?
Three o'clock, you'll start trophies. Now, if it's not real hot, people knows there's a van, they might stay. So I think the van ought to be a little earlier that evening.
So if we're doing, say, three o'clock, trophies over by, let's say, four o'clock?
Yeah.
And we have a van six to nine, and then we have a couple vendors, I don't know how many is going to stay, so you might want to look at doing. If you're going to do two vans, maybe do one from, you know, five to seven, or one seven to nine, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, just a couple higher.
Because, I mean, people from just in the community might come out for the van.
Well, sure, no, no, I'm, I'm hoping they will.
Yeah.
They probably will.
I'm just saying, if you put a two-hour gap between trophies and the first van, with only a couple vendors, you're going to lose everything.
Most guy with the cars will be out here before dark.
That's what I'm saying.
If they got nice cars.
Yeah.
So if you, if you have a van starting at four thirty or five, they still can see part of that show?
Yeah, they'd probably stay.
And then head out.
Yeah.
All right, so with that being said, then we'll need a motion, and then we'll make that registration fifteen dollars.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion by Jacob, do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second. All those in favor, seven five, say aye. Any, any opposed, like signs, so order. Okay, council member position open, I've got a letter to read you. Date is May thirty-first, Town Bell Mayor and Council like to thank you. Thank our beautification team and Adam and the street department crew for helping with several recent projects to make our town a little nicer. However, due to personal and unexpected family health reasons, I can no longer fulfill my duty as councilwoman and hereby submitting my resignation effective May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Keys are enclosed, my ordinance binder has been returned. Also submitting my resignation to Mr. Hill and the KRT Board of Directors, which I appointed her to, which she is a current member representing the mayor of the town. Sincerely Connie Fowles. With that said, somebody will make a motion to accept the resignation. I talked to her, asked her, I said, would you reconsider? Talked to her again the other day, she said no, she just, she really has to just step out.
Make a motion to accept the resignation?
Motion by John, we have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Jacob, all those in favor, seven five, say aye. Any opposed, like sign? All right. Talking about that replacement, the next person in line was Linda Morris. Asked Linda if she kind of would like that, or the duties that she's preparing, are doing for us right now, which has been, I think, great. And I think she's gotten a lot of compliments and everything else. I think she told me the other day that she would rather stay where she's at, at the present time. And she said that she can always make her mind up within the next three years, when I'm showing her, I'll get her off. The next person in line that, on the election, was actually Mark Dowdy. So if it's council's wish, I will go to him, ask him if he would be interested, if that works for you all. And if so, then we'll see about bringing him on in the July meeting, and go from there.
Let me just say, there's nothing in the ordinances that say that we have to follow that procedure. That's just something we've done in the past, which was go to the next person online. To go to the next person after the next person, I don't know if we've ever done. But anyway, it just kind of falls along.
We actually, we didn't follow that with Connie. Connie was not on there. And, you know, I think I brought her name to council, and we voted her in. But, but, you know, John, I mean, there is no.
Right.
Record of how you have to do that, or option, or ordinance, or anything written that says, hey, this is the order that you must follow.
And I'm not saying that against Mark, as a matter of fact. I'll make a motion that you ahead and ask Mark if that's something he's interested in.
Okay, got a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Nicole, all those in favor, seven five, say aye. Any opposed, like sign, so order.
I, I wasn't speaking against Mark, I just want it to be known that there's nothing in the ordinance that says we have to follow that procedure.
We have to. All right, thank you all, and I'll contact him and see what his opinions are, and see whether or not he'd like to do it or not. And then I'll be back to you, and we'll go from there. The next thing I've got on the list there is Mrs. Blue. And Mrs. Blue had actually drawn over a list to me, and Mrs. Blue, I'll let you to elaborate a little bit. But she's given me a list of several properties, a couple, couple pages full. And, and asked about, you know, whether or not she's got the, I guess, our backing as to whether or not she can go and maybe speak to some of these people. I still need to do a lot of lookups and everything else. I may pass this to John to, to get that done. And at least to be able to go back to them, to speak to them about, hey, would you work on your property? Fix up your property somewhat, or paint it, or do whatever. And Mrs. Blue, I want to thank you myself for, you know, doing this. I'll tell you, she, she's been around the town, I think she knows one end of the other now.
Maybe not. Still struggling a little bit.
Yeah, but I'll give you a few minutes to speak about it, and, you know, what, what, what do you think?
So what, we, Bob and I traveled the town several, several times. What we did is we put together that list, and we tried to make it as minimal as possible. I mean, there is a lot to do. We only stayed on Dupont, and it's pretty much on the west side. And we tried to be as kind as we could, but there are some buildings that are just, I mean, they're horrendous, they need, they need a facelift. So I, I actually enclosed a letter that we could send to the owners, or we could talk to the owners, that would give them the opportunity, if you want to put it that way, that they can actually just pay for paint, and they have volunteers. So they only have to pay for the paint, and we're going to do the job for them, so that's an opportunity for them to fix up their property. To me, that's a great opportunity, but I know there are lots of these people that just, just bought those buildings for a write-off, and they don't care. So that's going to be a challenge, you know, I mean, I'm sure we'll get, I'm sure we'll get some people that will say, that's a great, that's a great idea. I'll pay for the paint, you can, you guys can paint. Which brings up, the second challenge is that most of the people that volunteer are usually seniors. And so climbing up on some of that stuff might be a bit difficult, so. Again, that, that might be a challenge, to climb up on, that, most, most of the facade, it's mostly the facades, the fronts that need to be fixed, but there are some sides, and that, some of them are very high. So I'm not really sure how we would do that, scaffolding and stuff like that. Obviously, the town cannot participate in any of the funds, because that will be a conflict of interest. So, but we maybe could use a letterhead if we have to send, like, to the, to the folks that are out of state or out of town. I mean, there are some right here that we can just physically talk to. And so, having said all that, and we really want, we really want to get it done, I've been on the Facebook page, and there's a lot of pushback from people that tell me that they don't want to volunteer because they've been shut down before. And I have said, well, you know, excuse, excuse me, but like, that's the pass, get over it and stop bitching, basically, is what I have said. But I mean, I don't think that's going to happen, you know, I mean, people, people are holding grudges for whatever reason, because they didn't get to do what they wanted to do. But this actually is not a town council thing, this is a, this is a citizen-to-citizen thing. And so I feel like that we could, you know, if we can talk to individuals, I know there are some out there that will do that. They'll just, they'll just buy the paint and they'll let us paint. But we do need to get volunteers, and that's my job, you know, to get the volunteers. But the other thing is that, and I mentioned this to my lecturer also, is that, is there an ordinance that requires people to keep up to a certain standard with their building? I mean, is there an ordinance?
There is an ordinance about, you know, what we require and things like that. But also with the ordinance, what we found out, especially with dilapidated structures, things like that. In order to actually get that done, you have to have a certified building inspector, which we do not have.
We do not have that.
We do not have. We actually, Montgomery and Smithers had one that we were talking to them about sharing a couple days a week. He actually, he quit up there, came to work down at Marmette for about three weeks. He quit over there, and now they've got a new guy at Marmette, which I know him very well, and, but he's not certified. And so he's getting ready to start taking the training and the testing. But he's probably a year out before he's actually certified.
Wow, but it's going to take a long time, my lecturer, anyway, to get all this done, so maybe a year out isn't that bad.
Yeah.
If we can, if we can talk to the people that are actually willing.
Yeah.
We can start.
And there's probably several people on this list that would probably say, that's, that's good.
That's what I think, and there'll be some that will.
I recognize, you know, several of these on here, a couple of them are, you know, we've got one down here that was on the demolition list that we had. Now it's got a building permit in the window down on the lower end. And, you know, that building, you know, I had it on the list, they ended up, they said, well, we want to fix it up, I'll tell you what. Inside that building, from what they gave us on the building permit amount, it definitely can't be fixed up for that amount.
Okay.
Guarantee you what. And, and I'm no big contractor, but I've done a lot of building. And, you know, there's no way they're going to look for that. The house, three houses down, that's got the plywood and the windows, that one is set to be torn down. It is owned by the attorney that purchased, that John was talking about a little while ago, it is owned by him. That lot, he actually said he would nominate to the Town Bell.
Okay.
It's too small to really do a whole lot with, but, you know, we, we probably. I think I brought that to council several months ago, and he said he'd take it. Yeah, I recognize some of the others, a couple of these are mine, you know.
Of course they are, yeah. But yours is actually not that bad.
If I, you know.
I'll buy the paint for him, we'll paint it.
Okay, okay, awesome.
Yeah, Nicole's will buy the paint for me.
Okay, good. But you know, you know, if we just, honestly, if we, if people just see.
Yeah.
That things are changing.
Yeah.
Like baby steps.
Yeah.
You know, a year, a year out isn't that long. I mean, it's going to be one, it's going to be one, one building at a time, and just, you know, if we can just make just a little bit of difference, one building at a time, it's, it's.
Yeah.
It's going to change things. I mean, people, people get excited when they see things happening. Yes, I, I, we were down in, we were down in South Charleston, and they have all these pretty different colors on the facades of the buildings. So if we could do that, it looks amazing, yeah. You know, and so if we could do that, and then paint the doors pretty, and it's, it's really not that hard, except for climbing up on the.
Yeah.
And again, and again, the volunteers to do that, but.
Well, there was a, there was a boy, it was up at Montgomery, that he ripped on a lot of the facades up around Montgomery. And, and actually, I worked with him at State Auditor's Office, but the boy passed away about a year and a half ago. And, but I had even talked to him, I said, why don't you come down to Bell and paint a few buildings?
Right.
And he said, time, he said, he'd try to get down there, but he passed away.
But, but if we could just get them on two.
If we find somebody even like that, do a few things, you know. We've talked to Carter about one of the main facade down here in town.
Right.
Bell Chemical Company is supposed to paint the, the other pass all around that area. So we're going to get some of that done. And then, you know, some of these properties, I mean, I recognize some of them, and, and, you know, know that they will. I put fourteen houses on the demolition list, we've got about eight that's been determined that they will be torn down. So we actually had Rodney Alftus here last week. He did tear one house down, it's the house that I own on West Central Avenue. He did tear that house down, and, you know, he said he would be back. Because I thought he was going to stay from what they said, but he said, no, he had a couple others he had to get to and tear them down. So he'll be back, we've got a couple of them, Medlin Avenue, we've got a few on the Main Street, we've got a few back here. Got another one up on Thirteenth Street. I'm thinking where else, we're not missing some of the list of, uh, several of them. Yeah, yeah, two, three on Medlin.
How about that big blue one up there by Big Arm Motor?
Uh, that was not on the list, because the girl was still living in that house at the time when I put that list together. And that one, I've got, actually, I went by there just in the past week and a half, that one, and two houses down, that I did not have on that list, I've got one there, and have already called. That's actually done through the Regional Development Authority and the Canadian Plan, which I said on both those boards. And they said, wait, now they're not taking any more until they get all these torn down, get some money back into the pot, and then they'll start again, so.
That's all good progress.
So I'll make sure that we get those other two over on Medlin, well, there's three over there actually that I did not get on that list, but I'll make sure it's on that.
And so the council's okay, but, I mean, I'm going to need help as far as Lisa or Jamie, wherever they're at.
Yeah.
I know some, but the council's okay, we'd be approaching these people and saying, this is, you know, this is what we want to do.
John, if you, when you take this list, and, and, you know, while you're.
Get us some contacts.
Get some contact names and all that, who owns them or whatever.
I have some contact names, but there's still some that I don't.
Well, I'll just go down the list.
Yeah. And some of those she's got, are okay, but.
If it says okay, I'll skip.
Okay.
We'll get you that through the.
She started getting, thank you so much.
Almost not.
If you go out on the internet, pull up the West Virginia Flood Map Tool. And it'll come up, and you can launch that map from that site. And up at the top, it says, enter an address. If you enter the address, it'll tell you who owns it.
Okay, cool.
But it is out on the internet under West Virginia Flood Map Tool.
Okay.
Just go to Google and type it in.
West Virginia Flood Map?
Flood Map Tool.
Oh, okay, let me just write that down.
And it's really, I know, you know, I'm the, supposed to be the certified floodplain manager for Bell. I won't say I've taken all the certifications, but I try and do the best I can. You can't take every training session that they put out there. Not, I'm working full-time, but, but I do the best I can and take the ones that I can take. And everybody uses it through the floodmap tools, just to see who owns the property and everything.
That, I can show you how to use that tool as well.
I'm sure I can.
I use it. You can hit, you can hit like the sheriff over there, there's a lot of information.
Okay, well, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
But, yeah, no, I mean, I think it's exciting that we're trying to, you know, we're trying to move forward and appreciate all your help, absolutely.
No trouble, and like I said, you've got my number, call me, you know what, okay?
Who buys the, the, they own the side of the paint, and then the, the volunteers paint. So to me, it's a win-win, you know, but, I mean, I feel like, I feel like the owners should be happy to buy the paint if they can get the.
You can't get it anyway.
Well, we got, we got to get the volunteers, I mean, if, if people are bitching like, I'm sorry, if people are bitching like crazy about Bell, 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 then I, I mean, I've done the same, you know that, as kindly as I can, but they need to, if they're bitching, they need to step up, you need to put feet on it, you know, it's like, don't, don't be bitching, just come on their behalf, you know?
You've always got, most people will continue to bitch, you know, you're never going to stop that.
Of course they are.
And, you know, and we see that every day.
Of course, but, but, but if you're going to bitch, do something about it, you know?
But they don't want to do that.
Oh, I know that, I know that, but hopefully we can get.
It's a whole lot easier when you can hide behind the site or a Facebook page or whatever, and even come up and say it's not. It's a whole lot easier when you can hide behind the uh site or a Facebook page or whatever, and even come up and say some honest. Because, you know, some people allow that.
Yeah, but, but hopefully.
That's not any good.
No, it's not, but hopefully we'll get enough people that we can like, like I said, baby steps, one building at a time, and and make it better, you know. But that's, I mean, I'm not saying it can happen in like two minutes, it's gonna take a while, isn't it, you know? I know, I believe we'll do it, I believe we do.
Alrighty, we appreciate it, and we'll get back to you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay?
Yeah.
Alrighty. Um let me see, let's stop right here, and let's uh, let's go ahead and uh we've got a couple of visitors with us. And uh first of all, we got Teresa Howe, and uh she was running for the House of Delegates. And we've always allowed, you know, the candidates to come in and talk for a little bit, and uh just give us some information. But Teresa, before you do that, let me recognize David Howe, you all remember David was here. David set up a business here in Bell, up in the old Bell Lumber Company building. David, welcome, glad to have you here. Teresa, go ahead and stand up, walk around, uh you know, speak to us and uh.
Thank you, Mary.
Tell us, tell us what you're gonna do all year.
All right, thank you so much. Um first, I wanna say what an impressive meeting that you all run. Um and it's impressive to see the citizens, uh Mrs. Blue and the rest of you all here, that you wanna do so well for your town. Um I will tell you that I am running for the House of Delegates in our district, which is the fifty-second district. And I am a lifelong resident of our area. I grew up in Marmet, didn't go too far, live in Winterford now. Um I'm a nurse of twenty-five years, and also helped my husband, uh David, he has an office here in Bell. We recently relocated here from Shillian, and so it's uh, we're very happy to be here, we love your town. I pass your city hall every day when I go to the post office. Thank you. We've had uh together five kids that graduate from Riverside High School, let me tell you this in. And so we are invested in our area, um got involved in politics because several years ago, we really wanted to see Eastern Knott County thrive. We didn't want our kids to have to go out of state for jobs. Um and so part of that, we've been successful with some of the policies that have been pushed forward. Um I am a Republican on the ballot. Uh we have two kids that are business owners themselves in this area, and of course, my husband David. Two daughters that are in nursing, and one's in nursing school and one in civil engineering, um and then one is going back to get her masters. So with the business development part of it, we wanted to try to work with the Republican Party and help on this end of the valley. So we're not quite satisfied with where we're at, um with seeing the business growth. Um we've looked at educational policies as well, and we would like to see, you know, some things happening in our high schools. I'm a vocational um advocate strongly for Alec Carver. Um because I, I don't know if people know the statistics, but for the kids that graduate from Riverside High School, you know, there's several that don't go into higher education. Um the drug epidemic has hit us pretty hard. I don't think there's, I, I'd say there's probably not a family in here that hasn't been touched in some way, you know, with the drug issues. My, you know, one of my dau, my daughter, she is a cosmetologist, and one of her clients is a teacher. She only has four kids in her classroom that um are living in a household with a mother and father. The rest are being raised by grandparents, um aunts, uncles, you know, in that nature. So, but some of the goals that I have is education, business, um vocational trade, um seniors. You know, I'm a strong advocate for seniors. I worry about the ones that are paying the property taxes, especially right now in the economy that we have. And I've reached out to our congressman and I said, I don't know if you all realize it, but some of our seniors are going back to work to supplement their income because they're struggling to make it, you know, they don't wanna deplete their retirement. So, but there's only a threshold that they can make in a year on top of what they're getting from their retirement, social security and so forth. So there's a lot going on. Um David and I, we started uh on the Republican Executive Committee several years ago. I recently completed a four-year term as a chairman. Um so as I said, I love your meeting and how you all run it, um it's very impressive. I do have a campaign kickoff this weekend, on Saturday, you're more than welcome to come. My information's on the flyers and the business card that I gave you all. Um so please reach out if you have any questions. And then, of course, David's office is down here, you're more than welcome to stop and see us same time.
She's there, she's there every day.
You'll have any questions for me?
Somebody's got a case to screen.
I try.
But you know, it's fun, though.
I was glad to hear that you recognized the issue of the family community. Not that it's a good thing that there's issues with families in the community. So my, my wife has taught fourth grade, or second grade for sixteen, seventeen years. My daughter teaches fourth grade, she's going on her third year. And I can tell you that across the, the country, it seems like teachers are being bashed. Though what, you know, my wife, poor thing, I'm telling you, she, she buys Christmas gifts for mothers. Um her and my daughter have pitched in and bought food for families, and a lot of that's not seen. And teachers are blamed a lot of times for what's not being taught. But sometimes what they're teaching is survival. And she's got, she's got one kid this past year that um has a sleeping disorder that's ninety percent of the time in, in class. And the bad part is, he snores so loud, he kept most of the class awake. And the teachers today are faced with a whole different precedent that we would have never faced before. And, and it's, I, I really feel across, and, and I, I'm in banking, I, I, God knows I'd be fired after the first hour if I tried to teach. Um but I really think that they're, they're faced with something that we've never seen before. You mentioned grandparents raising kids, and unfortunately, it's happened to them way too much. And um these poor grandparents are just wanting to enjoy retirement, and with their grandkids, and not necessarily raise them, but they're doing the best they can. I was glad to hear you say that you're wanting to partner with the communities and try to help that piece as well. Because I just don't think teachers get enough of that, that support, unfortunately.
So two things, I'll tell you quickly, when I mentioned the grandparents, a few years ago, there was a bill. Um I think Delegate Graves was the one who pushed this, but I helped advocate because of the grandparents that are being faced with the financial issues and so forth. And you know, it's a struggle when you're older and you're taking care of these young kids and so forth. And I think that they're working with maybe West Virginia State now. Um I, I, I don't know the detail, I can't remember the details of the program, but that's one of the things that we want to advocate for. I was telling Councilwoman Asbury that, and I told a group that I spoke to recently because I know them closely. Um but I am the fifth child, um I'm the baby, and my dad passed away when I was two. So my mother was a widow of five, and she didn't have any higher education or anything, and so it was very difficult growing up. And I will tell you that um I, I spoke to, um her name was Mrs. Rainsy, she was my teacher at Marmet Junior High. And if I didn't have, I was a kid that was picked up on the corner by the church bus. And I, um Marmet and Herschel is mostly where I went to the churches, you know, even as grade school and junior high and so forth. And if I didn't have that structure with the churches, and I didn't have the teachers that, you know, helped me get through school, I can tell you the ones in elementary school, the ones in junior high, and the ones in high school, uh you know, and I didn't have the family support, I would not have made it. And so I am very touched by these families that I see having to raise these kids and so forth on their own because I know what my mother went through. You know, I, I know that it's a struggle because I remember when we had issues with food on the table and clothes to wear to school. And I can tell you personally, this is very personal, probably the best Christmas we had one time was, um we were sponsored. And I didn't know that as a child, but as an adult, we helped Chesapeake Elementary, which is where my kids went to school. And so we sponsor kids there, and the light bulb finally went off. Now I know where all this Christmas presents came from. And so, and also the teachers, uh when you all do the, for the school system, uh Tracy White's the one who started it, I believe, where you sponsor a teacher. We always sponsor Mrs. Pike in Chesapeake, she was our fifth grade teacher, and so she's very near and dear to our heart. And so we know, um you know, what they go through, and you know, we're always there by their side, we listen to what they have to say. And I am the voice that takes it to the people that are in the legislature. You know, I've been a very strong advocate for the last, what, eight years that we've been involved um to try to push these policies and get the voices out there to the people in the legislature. Because, you know, they, sometimes people are afraid to say, hey, this is what's going on, because it's a little intimidating. Um but they take me right in, um I work with them closely, I've worked with groups on a national level. I've worked with our congressmen, our senators and so forth, and so I hope to continue that as well. So if you remember me in the May election, um because I'll be on the primary ballot and also in the general of twenty-four, I do intend to make it on the primary. I hope to have your support.
Thank you. Am I having a watching board?
Yes.
I know real well. I gotta talk to thirty-three years. It's chilly time, and she, the caller, to come back and fill in. Very good.
We started seeing, and I think as parents, um as our kids got a little bit older, um you know, our, when the kids were in grade school, you start seeing some changes then, but now our youngest is now about twenty and twenty-one. And so now it's a little bit different, and we see the younger kids and so forth, and what's going on on social media, and so it just worries us, worries us dramatically.
This is twenty-four seven. Is the phone.
And they're after, I can't tell you the number of people that they target our kids. I would say they're targeting our kids in our churches to take away the family values, um you know, and to fracture our communities and so forth. So if you all wanna reach out to me, come Saturday, you're more than welcome, I'm always here to help you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Thank you, Dave.
Hey, Teresa, I wanna talk to her, old doctor down.
Dave actually uh is the, is an auditor uh for, or through the state of West Virginia, and he audits cities and towns. So he could, we need to treat his vehicles, he could be auditing us from today. And uh welcome and glad to have you all here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh you're welcome to stay, or, or you can leave. I'll just say that.
We'd like to stay because we need that from his office here, and we'd like to see what's going on.
No problem, yeah, we're not gonna talk about him anymore. And he's, he's not on any of our past few lists. Uh I'm gonna stop, uh I'm gonna skip number seven right now, and we'll come back to that one in a few minutes. Uh number eight is the police department report, uh you've got that, and I think that uh, I don't know that there's anything on there that's um. What's that? Oh, yeah, the naked man, yeah. He ended up up around the Walgreens, the Exxon and everything else, he was actually back up there a couple of days later, I saw him up there that night. He's a piece of work. I don't think there's anything earth-shattering or anything on there, so uh we'll go ahead and go on. And before we end up uh bringing anything else up, let me go ahead and uh ask you all right now to uh, uh let's go down to number twelve, approval for visitors to address council, someone will make a motion.
So moved.
So moved, by Jacob, we have second.
I'll second it.
Second on the call, all those in favor of saying five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like to sign some words, so we'll go ahead and start over here. David, does anything else? We always give our, our people in the audience time to speak, you know. Chris, Chris, do you have anything else?
I just have a question for John, you said that when you were trying to collect the delinquency and you might have to write someone off? Because someone bought a property?
Yeah, so um if, if a piece of property is, if someone loses their house and gets sold or gets auctioned off, there's no way now for us to go back and collect that money.
They're in a lien on it?
No, we have not done liens until just recently. That's what we're doing now, going forward.
My question, because they would have had to pay it, had they been in a lien on it.
Yeah, council had just passed that ordinance two months ago.
Yeah, I remember, I remember passing it, but I just wondered, you know, I, I, about the time.
Some, some of these, shouldn't have rode off years ago.
With all the mayors and all the older constellations, nobody had ever done any.
Well, I'm sorry about being that now.
And some, some of these that we're talking about right now shouldn't have rode off years ago.
Yes, yeah.
Uh West Reynolds Avenue, since the sewer system was put in, nobody's replaced the whole street to this day.
Right.
And with sewer and storming, so. So we feel pretty good about a couple of things.
I do too.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't get me wrong.
Oh, no, no, I agree. Oh, we wanna make sure you know what.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know, but I mean, I feel good too.
This uh, anything, Landon, anything?
On that beautiful tank in that seven-down thong. It looks like some of the big trees that were pulled out here on the.
Can be, but right now they've only pulled a few, but we're gonna take a couple more, but uh we've got, I think there's five or six down through there need to come out, but uh the one on six, we didn't pull it out, mountain gas pulled that out, of course, when they were out there going in work. So we didn't have any expense on that. We did do the work on Tenth Street and Sixth Street.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I'm not used to that, it looks so bare. Really look bare on that street. Is that, that, the gas companies, what's on our alley?
Gas companies on the new station on the aisle. If you go up by Thirteenth Street, you'll see a gas compressor station up there, that's gonna be the same thing right there.
Oh, okay.
That's how they bring in the high-pressure lines in the Bell, and then they actually regulate it down to low pressure, where you can use them now.
I would just, we, I just didn't know what they were doing.
They bought that lot, they've been working on buying that lot for almost two years. A lot of people didn't know, but they've been working on it for two years, it was an old mistake. And a bunch of people, they couldn't find the airs and everything, so finally they got everything working.
I'm just wondering what, what's going on here.
Go in.
Yes. This chemical problem that we're looking at. What are we doing on it? You didn't promise.
Uh that's one thing I'm gonna talk to the council about in a few minutes, because some of the comments that was on the Facebook page, and everybody saw them, weren't true. They weren't right. Uh I corrected one thing on there, and you know, there's still not some things right, and uh.
Because everything I'm looking at, I mean, I pulled this up from Google, all of these chemicals are cancer-causing. You know, I'm a cancer survivor, I live right down there, I don't want this, I mean, I, you know. And has anybody checked anything since six?
Then the best thing for you to do, because you got till July the.
Right, tends to do comment.
Yeah, so you need, you need to go ahead and make sure you comment to DV, ask me in by Monday, July the tenth.
So the town's not going anything?
The, the town really, you know, it's not within the town corporate limits of the town of Bell. Now, you know, I wanna talk to council about it because I've talked to the plant managers at Optima uh yesterday. I've talked to the plant manager at Kimworth Plant this morning at eight o'clock. So probably know a little bit more than what some people know, uh but you know, I don't know everything. And uh you know, and that's the thing about it, you gotta make sure you have all the facts straight before you just start putting things out there.
Well, I don't do Facebooks, I don't know what was on Facebook, I read what was in the newspaper.
Yeah.
And I pulled up these uh chemicals because I haven't.
This, this actually, this email, you know, this email right here came from a uh Mike Tony at the Charleston, is that the email? I sent this to him. Yeah, he's, he's already talked to me today. I've had channel eight call, and uh so, you know, they're, they're asking.
Hasn't been sent or anything done since six, seven, eight, nine?
The EP, if they get enough of letters and everything, so I encourage everybody, if you're questioning or wondering about it, send a letter into the EP. Make sure you follow the instructions that they gave you in the article, and uh send that letter in. And I've already told them, if they do have a hearing, you know, they can have it here, that's no problem, we'll fix up the big meeting. We'll fix up the big meeting room and gymnasium if there's enough people, you know, to have them in here and host it here, so that, that's no problem. It was in the paper yesterday, yesterday. Now.
So my house is up for sale?
Well, you're, you're probably not telling anyone it's been up for sale, you know, sometime, often on, here through the years. And, but that's the thing about it, I mean, you know, from even what they've told me, they're not doing much more than what they were doing a few years ago.
Before the explosion.
And.
That's what Denise mentioned.
Yeah, and if you look at their information that they'd sent in to D E P prior to two years ago, to this one that's submitted, they're actually just trying to rebuild and get started again. They have not processed anything now at Optima or something. But before they get started, they've gotta have the blessing of Kimore's. Kimore's plant manager this morning at eight o'clock told me that they haven't got that blessing yet. So they've still gotta get that blessing before they'll be able to operate.
Is it worse than DuPont?
Is it what?
Is it worse than DuPont's or how?
Uh, probably not, in my opinion, but.
Did you, did you be cleared up DuPont a lot of things, you know?
Well, they've, they've done a lot of scrubbers and everything else down there, it's not as bad as what it used to be. You know, you've got more marine life, aquatic, you know, life and things like that than what you had fifty years ago. And, you know, they've made, made a lot of leaps and bounds to making sure everything's right. It was an unfortunate accident on December eighth, two thousand and one, you know, and that night, I mean, I spent the whole night in that plant, so, you know. But, you know, it was bad that we had to pull a gentleman out that was deceased or, or did that. Uh, but, you know, it's sad, but the other two workers that actually went to the hospital are back to work and reporting to work today, so.
I can remember probably seventy years ago, going to bail. All the things wrong up in the car, you hope you know, never dreaming that I would ever leave them, and I don't smell anything.
Yeah, no, you don't. I mean, here in a few months, I'll be seventy years old, I lived right here in bail seventy years. And it don't, I don't, I don't, you know, I don't want to do this. My dad worked there, you know, a lot of the husbands and wives and, and, you know, people in the area worked there for years. Doyle worked there for years. You know, Joanne's dad grew up here and her mom, you know, been around here forever. Teresa's dad's been here in the area for years, you know, so I mean, we've all had people that's worked at DuPont plant or. And, and you know, the thing is, I mean, just the same thing I told this newspaper reporter today. You know, now, we've got a chemical company that used to be DuPont only, but now there's four chemical companies in there. You know, we've got Bell Chemical, we've got Optima, we've got Corea Ha, and we've got Kimore's. We're getting ready to have maybe a fifth one in that plant, and possibly a sixth. Uh, if everything comes through that they hope will happen, we'll probably have six companies in there in the next few years. And, and to me, there's a couple of those processes that, you know, I know a little bit about just because I've been told. But, you know, you ain't say, you can't, it's one of those things you can't say anything about. But, but I think we can see six companies here, here in the future. And, you know, and then the other one is, you know, the old Occidental dam. You know, I'm not ever gonna say that we won't see something there again, you know. But right now, the back left part of that property is a most contaminated site, you know, probably in West Virginia, probably pretty close. But that site back there, they had to drive steel piling all the way around that old thing. And so there is still piling back there, if you ever go out there, you'll see trees and everything else. And they cut some of the trees down last year, replanted some new ones, and that's to, you know, bring all the contamination out of the soil under these trees. And they cut them down, burn them, and start all over again. They did cut around the property in Occidental this past week, so there's a six foot path all the way around it. And, you know, they're gonna continue on that, but there's about two hundred wells out there. But they monitor and check to see whether or not they're cleared. And, you know, they were ingesting molasses into those wells until about a year and a half, two years ago. And that molasses causes the bugs, they say, to come up, John, I heard this in the C U C meeting. They cause those bugs to come up and eat the chemicals in their bank, all of them, out of the ground.
I think this must be the Nazarene church.
It's Wednesday night.
I'm sure they're not aware.
Wednesday night, yeah, but, but anyway, I mean, you know, I asked them, you know, I said, how big are these bugs now? You know, they big as we are, you know. I hate to see one of them pop out of the ground and see what exactly what we're gonna see sooner or later.
Yeah, but there wasn't a deer.
Yeah, yeah, well, there were four deer out, and then there were, yeah, the bugs came out, but, you know, there were a bunch of rabbits out there. There was a couple of foxes out there and everything else, we think they pretty much ate most of the rabbits. Uh, now the foxes are gone, now the rabbits are coming back around. And so we'll see a bunch of rabbits over there again. So it, it's, it's, you know, it's just a big cycle, just, you know, stops and starts again, yeah, it continues just going that way.
So we probably will be years before we'll be able to get our hands on that playground down there.
Well, the playground, it's still, I, I, if I had to guess, it's two or three years out. Now, the playground where the fishing pier is, that's in the works right now.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm hoping right now that that's within the next six months, at the le, at the most. And I've talked to an attorney, they've got an attorney working for them that's up in Oregon town, I've talked to him three times, talked to him about three weeks ago. And I think we'll have the fishing pier and all that, we have the fifteen thousand dollars to do the kayak and canoe lunch down there. And then again, the, the property next door where the old ash house was, we'll gravel that, make that a parking lot for the kayak canoeers. So that's what we brought to council, and that's what we'll do, you know, by the time we get this. You know, the recreation plan for Upper Canal Valley, they didn't have anybody that stepped up to say we'll do it right now. And I told them, I said, give us some money, we'll do the kayak canoe lunch, so they gave us the three thousand dollars from the commission. I'm ready to do it if we own the property, but we don't own the property yet, so, yeah, you can't do it until we own the property. Uh, people, Kay asked me the other day, and I think tonight, you know, when we're gonna, wanna open the playground up again, you know, it's, it's hard to tell. Because I don't want that land to bust again, and a kid being there and have sewer on it with the kids. And then, you know, find out who's gonna sew a snatch.
And all that new playground equipment.
And we've got the new swings, they're all in, it's all sitting over at Sandy Tree Plant, it's ready to go in, Mr. Sue, you can hit them. You know, we've got a brand new garbage truck on order, been ordered now for eighteen months, two years. And, you know, it's still not here, we don't even know when we'll see it. You know, we gotta have it by next year, we gotta probably either give the money away or send it back. You know, because we had about a half million dollars that came in through our funds, that we still hold on to.
Not on purpose.
No.
We're trying to spend it.
Yeah, and we've got trying engineering, looking right now to do some manholes and things like EMTORs and sewer lines that need to be replaced right now. Yeah, we've got some, we don't even have a manhole, so, you know, we gotta get something done.
Well, what's the type of cement for the sewer truck? garbage truck?
Those of availability of cans and chassis and all that. Yeah, you order a fire truck or anything right now, it's two, two and a half years.
Yeah.
Nothing, nothing is ready right now, all the trucks, the chips with pickups and everything else, you've got some of the same problems happening with bigger trucks. You just can't, can't get the, everything it takes to, to get it to run.
They need to go back to the old plant, you know, the technology.
It's not ever gonna happen. You know, you continue changing the emissions and everything else, not gonna happen. Yeah, we just got a fire truck here in bail, took almost two years to get there. So that's, that's nice. All right, uh, who else? We got Tim?
Uh, did you say the fiscal year ends when?
June thirty. June thirty.
June thirty, so it's considered a new year in July.
Next week is the end of our fiscal year.
And when do you open the gym back up for the kids?
Usually about the time the school starts.
Anybody know when school starts sometime?
Oh, yes, twenty, twenty and somewhere around there.
Middle of August or sometime. Now, do you hire a new director and fire your old one, or how's that?
No, no, if you're gonna stay, then we'll keep you, okay? You're still, you're still employed, you're just gonna leave right now.
I'm just saying.
Some break.
And we'll bring you back, and you'll have a little raise when you come back. See, isn't that even greater? But you're still employed because you're still working for ours.
I do.
Yeah, so you'll get a raise, you're not hurt.
I'm just saying, Tim. First thing, first thing for a kid.
Tim will get a raise, right?
Yeah. Cause he already told you, he gets that money, so he should be good again.
All right, Joanne, I'm sorry, were you finished?
Yeah.
Your word? Okay, all right, nothing else? Ms. Grayly? Nothing?
I have a question.
Sure.
So since you are.
Well, we only give you one time.
I'm like, I'm listening, you're talking about all of your businesses and so forth, and here recently, I helped Dave get an internship started at his office. So he's working with some of the colleges, and he started an internship with the accounting program. So you have a future Business Leaders of America at Ferguson High School, which is Mrs. Kittingham, you have a bank here, and you have all these other businesses starting. Have you ever thought about talking to them to see if they would create internships and connect with the high school? Um, to see if we can keep some of these kids here working and have availability. I, but I checked probably maybe four years or so ago, and forty-seven percent of our kids, I believe, or maybe a little higher, did not go to higher education. And so that would be a good opportunity for those to transition into the workforce. Um, and plus, we have, everybody's struggling to get good employees, so, maybe consider that?
We, and, and you all know I'm a banker. Uh, you know, I'm also, I told Dave, I'm now on the board of directors for Whitesville State Bank. Whitesville State Bank has gone up there, asked the school about different things, and also talked to them about employees. And, and then also, also sit on the board for the state boys' credit union, that's state capital, and by that street, the capital. I've been on that board for twelve years, probably. But I went to that meeting today, and we've actually got a Riverside High School student that's actually working right here with us. So we do have that. And, uh, Riverside hadn't, or Whitesville hadn't hired anybody yet, because they just haven't had anybody that wanted to come out and go right to work. This girl that's down the state credit union, I met her today, she actually is a full go to market, so she is actually going to their college. Uh, some of the other businesses, I don't think we've had anyone, I know Dr. Campbell, the dentist over here. He has actually reached out to a couple of schools looking for dental hygienists, and people like that come to work. Uh, but, you know, it's, it's sad to say, I mean, I went down and got my hair cut today in the whole city, it's sad to say we don't even have a barber or a cosmetologist here. And maybe your daughter will.
Hannah can maybe come over.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll have her do the traveling thing.
Yeah, yeah, have her come over, and that way we won't have to go to town and get her.
Yeah, when my wife's on there, go to Charleston and get her hair done.
Yeah, but, but that would be great, I mean, I talked to Pastor Clark, you know, his daughter, you know, she's, she's working, you know. You know, it's called a cosmetologist and, you know, so, I mean, it'd be great to have a couple more places that we could set up. You know, some shops or something like that, and just get something started. You know, I talked to the Connie's Hot Dogs that we had here at the fair. You know, she, she was complaining because she was set up up here at Walker Machine or Boyd and Cantifella. And she said the bad thing was, uh, when the guys at the engineering building next door, when they were there every day, she could at least go over and use the bathroom and all that, and she said, now, if they're not there totally every day, she just can't do that. So she moved downtown. And I said, well, come over, I said, we've got power and everything out here across the street, I said, we'll set you up here across the street, set you up in Walker and City Hall, use the bathroom. You know, just to get a, you know, her little food truck that she does here, here in town. And, uh, but she, she came back down, bought her license, we thought maybe she's gonna do it, but then she hadn't been back, you know, other than the fair. And, I mean, we'll try anything one time, you know, the most we can ever say. Yeah, I mean, you can't even buy anything here in town. I mean, you go to Parmar and get an old sandwich in the router, or, you know, or pick up some pepperoni or cheese or Dorner and buy a pack of chips or something like that. But you actually get something to eat, you just can't do that. And, and it's, it's, it's sad that we can't, you know, but, you know, and people talk all the time and say, well, I remember bail win, you know. You know, ten years ago, twenty years ago, fifty years ago, you know. And, and, yeah, I mean, at one time, I mean, I can remember when I was five years old, I went over to the main street in bail at my granddad's building, which that was his, it wasn't my building. I own it now, but it wasn't grand. Back in that stage, the end office on this end, it was a barber shop. The next door used to be the coffee shop and the Greyhound bus station here in bail. The next door was the dry cleaning thing. The next building was my grand, the next door was my granddad's office, my dad had a TV shop in the back. And the last door on that building was another barber shop, so we had barber shops that hooked in of that building. And then we had the Greyhound bus station, which, you know, back in those days, before K R T was ever born, you know, we had the K R, I had the bus, Greyhound bus, and stop in bail, pick up people. Take them to DC and, and over through there, Joanne, I remember.
Well, we, we talk about we need to bring businesses in town, but Mickey down in wholesale transmission will tell you eighty percent of these businesses comes from out there.
Yep.
He's, he's all local people here in town.
You know, that's, that's what's sad, because, you know, I mean, it belongs to Nicole and Mickey, you know, I mean, it's their business. And, but, but, yeah, but, but I mean, you know, you can't even get people in town to actually, you know, bring business to you. And, and, you know, and that's the thing about it, I mean, Dave, I've asked you, what now, many times already, when you open up an office, so people come in there and just do their taxes. You know, and you said, hey, that's really not the business you're into. I mean, that, that'd be great, you know, I mean, you know, if we could get that to happen, you know, or, or get something else, or get somebody to, to just put a little restaurant in where you can get a hamburger or hot dog. And, I mean, I'd love to find somebody, I'm trying to see if we can find something for them, you know, to do. Uh, you know, I thought a few years ago, and even talked to, I think, Nicole there at one time, you know, I said, hey, we could use even a laundromat in there. You know, I said, hey, I said, you know, try to put one in, and we used to have one down there where the church is, the American, or the city of. Used to be a, a laundromat in there, and then on the right side, used to be a candy store, you know, one time. And, you know, I ran into Mr. Adner's, I guess, daughter-in-law, down in Trojan Landing a couple weeks ago, and she said, oh, she said, where do you live? I said, bail, she said, how long you been there? I said, oh, about seven years. She said, well, you probably knew my daddy-in-law, and told me who it was, I said, oh, yeah, I knew Mr. Adner. And, and, you know, and that's, that's the way bail was.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, you go back to the old Cohen drugstore and, you know, and everything else, and, you know, one time we had three grocery stores and stuff. You know, but you.
Well, the other thing is, you can't get anybody to work either, nobody.
Oh, yeah.
I wanted a convenience store in his building and sell stuff, and can't get anybody to work. So I like working every day, plus my other job, plus everything else.
Yeah.
That's the problem, nobody wants to work.
Nobody wants to work at home.
No, and, and, you know, and then, you know, whoever you do hire, you know, you can't find anybody to stay.
Yeah.
And, and then, you know, I still say the government gave out too much money.
Yeah.
You know, and, and, you know, and I mean, it's, it's bad, you know. I mean, I worked for that government at one time, and glad to give them a retirement check now, you know.
Hey, we just forgot to mention that what, what, we have three pool rooms in bail.
Oh, yeah, three beer joints, pool rooms. And now, you know, with the laws change. And, uh, now, you know, with the laws changing every day, you can't even put those in now, you have those too close to churches here in Belle. And, uh, you know, one thing on your, uh, information here is trying to, uh, take seniors from paying their taxes. We need to make sure we get a replacement for something like that from the town ban.
Absolutely.
Because, you know, and see, I read your brochure already. I said, yeah, we do while you were talking. But, but, I mean, that's the thing about it. I mean, you know, we've gotta make sure that we don't put some of these idiots in the House and Senate, uh, that's just sort of ruining the, the towns. I mean, you know, we used to get revenue sharing. We paid for this entire building with revenue sharing fund. When we finished this building, we didn't help them. And, uh, but, I mean, you know, it was great back in those days, and the art funds, I told John, I said, man, I said, I can remember when I was the recorder and treasurer here, you know, some twenty-some years ago. That, you know, we used to get the revenue sharing funds, and we didn't hope for nothing, you know, I mean, everything, anything we wanted, we pretty much wanted to have. Yeah, we have paved a street here now in, I think, nine or ten years ago. And, you know, right now, if we were now paved five streets right now, we might as well roll the sidewalk, so we'd be gone. And, uh, you know, it's sad to say. I mean, I've asked, you know, Larry Pike and several people, hey, can we get Dupont Avenue paved? You know, they come up doing the, uh, patchwork, you know, you look, the patchwork's all wet now on these highways. And I'm like, what after the roads prosperity, you know, words? And, and, you know, we've got a, a rainy day fund that we've never had anything like this before. But, I mean, you know, it seems like sooner or later, we gotta start using some of these funds to, to do some of these problems.
I think we're in the wrong county.
Well, we may be. I rode your road, you, uh, Sunday.
You see what I meant?
Yeah, yeah.
You get up to Dundon Bridge and go all the way to Somerville, that's eighteen miles.
Yeah.
But it is the best road I've been on with since I've been.
All the, got the first six miles, they paved everything from there to over, over to Somerville, yes, back through the woods.
I couldn't believe it.
I could not believe it.
Looked down at Malden, I mean, their, their streets are paved down there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. But I'm like, man, something's going on, we, we don't have the right people in the right places or whatever to get something done.
You know, as, as you guys know, state code absolutely strangles our municipality, especially classroom.
It is.
They do not give you any way on how to raise money, make money, or survive. The, the, that whole philosophy needs to be looked at and turned over. However, what Teresa's saying is, it can't be on the backs of our seniors.
Oh, no.
They, they are struggling, you know, by medicine and everything else.
I mean, the whole state act is.
There are a lot of ways, there's revenue replacement that, uh, can be made. You know, our state's surplus is like incredible now, billions of dollars in surpluses over here, and that does not include the COVID though.
Yeah.
So there, there are many ways of funding. You know, these, these towns are more than towns, they're homes. There are, there are homes are where we live, so we have to take care of them.
We had, we had COVID monies, there's a lot of cities and towns down here, got some of the COVID monies in the state. And, uh, we put a bunch of stuff together here with payroll and everything else, submitted it to, through an attorney that was sending all this in. State auditor's office came back and said, sorry, the governor spoiled all the funding. And so we probably missed it by two or three months.
That may end up being a blessing.
Well.
There's gonna be a lot of people go to jail.
Well.
I was telling you right now, a lot of people go to jail for misspending COVID money, and they, they have no clue that they misspent it because they pushed out trillions of dollars with no guidance whatsoever. They started spending, and then they told them what they're allowed to spend it on. And there's two, three years, next two, three years, there're gonna be the feds, the inspector general, and everybody else, uh, is gonna be out there auditing the COVID money. And we could go jail, so, just like on the flood money.
Well, I think that's, that's probably enough of that to say. Well, we appreciate that, and it's good to, uh, to at least talk about it and figure out where we're at and what we're trying to do, and, you know. You know, if somebody wanted to, I mean, there was a lady over in Chesapeake who started a restaurant. She came over and did the, uh, mayor's meeting boards. And, uh, you know, heck, I've looked, trying to find a rebellion around here. Uh, she wanted to go in Chesapeake because that's where she was from. Uh, she ended up, she looked down on Marvette, really couldn't find anything down there that was suitable to her. But, uh, you know, heck, I'd love to have somebody like that come over and just open up like an old napkins restaurant or something.
Yeah.
You know, and, uh, you know, get something like that here. I mean, you know, but that's, that's the thing about, I mean, you know, this past two weeks, we've had SBA here, you know, for the flooding that happened, you know, a year and a half ago. And, you know, the thing was, I said, well, there was some flooding in this area, but most of it was Campbell's Creek, you know, a couple of places, and the majority of it was fat Belle up that way. And I said, I don't know who set you up here. And they said, well, SBA told us to, you know, show up at Belle, West Virginia. And I'm like, well, you're about twenty, thirty miles away from really the big area. But the thing was, if John and I, being in banker, and Jacob being bankers, if we made them loans and we charged them five percent. They could come in here, get a loan through SBA for like a two percent max, I think it was, and refinance our loans. And, you know, and, and take it out as long as it was used for something in the flooding, or, you know, getting the right back together, things like that. But, you know, that's the thing about it, a lot of people didn't know that. I think they, they actually, in those two-week time, they only took care of, I think, twelve people total. And, yeah, I think it was twelve, well, I think he said they had twelve people go to the national canyon, so.
I think they only got four.
I don't know what they had.
I think they, what she told me is on the two applications.
Well, I, from what they told myself, I mean, it was like twelve people total. But, uh, you know, you don't know how many other, I actually, you know, was able to take care of one of the programs or anything like that. But that's, that's the bad thing about it, you know.
But it was not even advertised, except for out here in front of the building.
Well, it was advertised there, it was advertised through, uh, the, uh.
I mean, with like that Campbell's Creek and all that, you'd be like, no.
Well, I called preacher Long out there myself and told them, damn, you know, if they had anybody, send them up, you know. Cause I know they did a lot over through Springfield.
Because I wondered when I would drive by, what is that all about? Because I know hearing pain on it, of course, I knew we didn't have any flooders.
Nothing here, nothing at all. But, I mean, that's, you know, you try to, you know, when they called and said, hey, can we do it? I said, sure, you know. And, uh, you know, you, you try to help out, do what you can do and everything there, and make sure that, uh, you know, we're taking care of, you know. Not only our citizens, but citizens around the area, you know. And, and taking care of those people, just to make sure that they can get their feet back on the, on, on the road and all that, so. All righty, uh, that's it. Uh, I am going to excuse everybody in here. We are going to go into an executive session, as we've talked today. Uh, you can stay if you want, you can stay right here. You can run here for about ten minutes and probably ten, fifteen minutes, I'll bring everybody back in.
Are you wanting those participants to rush in?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's correct, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I just thought if we've got extra money, then, you know.
Yeah. Okay, we, we're coming out of the executive session, there was discussion, but no action was taken. No votes or anything were taken, everything. We'll come back into, uh, the session, and, uh, so the first thing, uh, I ended up, I did kind of quote or comment on the optical bell a little bit before. We did discuss that a little bit further in the meeting there and everything. I did give you all a card from Joe Green at, uh, Boyd Caterpillar, uh, so he did that. I give everybody a thank you card for allowing them to, uh, be with us for the town festival. And, uh, and then also what, uh, Tim and also brought up is, uh, they actually want to be involved in the car show, so I'll reach out to Joe. When I get some numbers on bands and things like that, then we'll move forward from there. Items from town attorney, Ray, anything at all? Nothing, okay. And items from council, Kay? Nothing, okay. John?
Nope.
Anything? Melanie?
No, sir.
Nicole?
I have a couple links.
Okay.
Um, first off, will you have Lynn put the street shower on the sign on the board so it's posted?
Yeah.
Okay.
You want me to do that or Melanie?
I was asking Melanie. Yeah.
Okay, you'll do that, Melanie?
I'll do that, tomorrow. And then the other thing I was gonna bring up was, we cleaned up the underpass before the, um, town fair.
Uh-huh.
Um, I'd like to do that again in July, and then that way maybe we can do it again like September before the car show.
That's great, and I, I can help, I just can't do it in the middle of the day, weekday, you know.
Yeah. Well, I was thinking either late evening or a weekend. Because that five to eight o'clock hour, that underpass is crazy busy.
Like crazy.
It's dangerous, nobody slows down.
I was in there spraying, I had to hug the wall a couple of nights when I sprayed.
They don't have any mercy on you.
The grass, yeah. Oh, they don't.
It was funny, the same people were driving by looking at us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it might even be better to do it like on a Saturday afternoon or something if you could.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, I, I can definitely, yeah.
Just pick it.
I'll throw out a date, some dates, we'll see.
Throw it out on our group page.
Yeah.
Yeah. And text.
I'll put it on, yeah. I'll put it on the group test, get it all just straight out there for Facebook.
We'll need that, when they call me, I'll, I'll do that, maybe send out a new one, so.
Okay.
I'll get that. All righty, anything else?
Um, that, that was it.
That was it?
Yes.
Jacob?
Nothing new for me.
Nothing, okay. All righty, so that's pretty much it, the German, somebody wanna make motion? So with my gun, we have saved for German.
I'll save him.
Saved by Jacob, all those in favor, say five, say nine.
Hi.